Good afternoon. Welcome to March the 20th, 2023 Meeting of Board of Education. I'm Jeff Ramsey, Chairman of the Board. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. We look forward to hearing from you and sharing information about our school. At this time, I'd like to ask our other board members introduce themselves.
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Josh Crisp, Dallas Township.
Robbie Leples, Cherryville Township.
Todd Kinlaw, South Point Township.
Doc Guthrie, Gastonia Township.
Thank you. Our first order of business... Oh, y'all haven't finished?
AM Stevens, Riverbend Township.
Brent Moore, Crowder's Mountain Township.
And Doc Cherry is with us. She'll be here in a few minutes. Our first order of business is to have our prayer and pledge allegiance to the flag. I'd like to ask Dr. Booker to lead us.
Thank you. Please join me in prayer. Everlasting Father, we give thanks to you today and we bless and raise your name. We thank you that you hear and answer our prayers and help that you be in the midst of our meeting today. You alone are good and your steadfast love endures forever. You are the God of endurance and encouragement. Your faithfulness moves from generation to generation. We thank you that your presence can calm the troubled seas of life and speak peace to our souls in time of suffering. Give us clear minds and peaceful hearts as we gather together to do the business of Gaston County Schools. Let our thoughts and hearts glorify you in all of our lives. You are the name above all names, the King above all kings. Blessing and glory, wisdom and thanksgiving, honor, power and strength be unto you, God, forever and ever. Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda? Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Stevens, all in favor? That's your names, adopt the agenda. Next order of business is to hear good news happening in our schools. Dr. Booker.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have several good news items for tonight. I would like to first ask Josie Houchard to come forward, please. She is a student at Highland School of Technology. Good afternoon, Josie. You are looking at one of the top five career in technical education scholars in the state of North Carolina. This is part of the United States Presidential Scholars Program, and she has been chosen for demonstrating outstanding ability and achievement in her career in technical education. Josie's engineering pathway at Highland, and she plans to attend a four-year university to continue studying engineering, in particular, environmental engineering.
Justice, on behalf of the board... On behalf of the board, we would like to congratulate you on your Presidential Scholarship Finals. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Guthrie, you didn't want to join?
I can get another one.
Yeah, Mr. Guthrie.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Say what?
Mr. Crisp, we have one more.
We're gonna get one more with Mr. Guthrie. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next, we want to bring attention to our Arts in Education Month, which is the month of March, and recognize our winners in the Mid-Carolina Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, as well as the Gaston County High School Senior Art Show. We will start with the Regional Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. We are honored that in Gaston County Schools, we had two Gold Key, two Silver Key, and six Honorable Mention Awards. We would like to recognize all the award-winning students now and ask them to come forward as I call their name. Hannah Langley and Sanaa Swan of Kramer Middle School. And they are Gold Key winners. Let's give you two at a time?
Ladies, congratulations. Glad that you're part of Gaston County Schools. You make us all proud.
Mr. Stevens, both of these students will have their arts submitted into the national competition. And Hannah's painting is already on a billboard here in our community as part of it, so.
Can I get in the center of the ladies?
If there are any families that would like to join them, please come forward.
Come on. Teacher, principal here.
I know Mr. Dorn is here. In addition to these two Gold Key winners, we had two Silver winners, Amy McPherson and Ramona Rice. And their artwork is also on display at the Mint Museum in Uptown Charlotte. So are either of them with us, Amy McPherson and Ramona Rice. We have five honorable mentions. The first of whom, Amy McPherson of Kramer Middle, actually won two honorable mentions. And then Sanaa Swan had also an honorable mention. Joyce Zoo also had an... All three of them over Kramer Middle. And then Samantha Satil of Highland School of Technology, and Emma Quick of Gaston Early College. If they are here and could come forward, please.
All right, family at all? Any family members? And one more. All right, thank you.
Next, we would like to recognize the award winners from the Gaston County High School Senior Art Show, which was held at Gaston College. First, we'd like to recognize Ashbrook High School student Erin Potteet and her teacher, Carrie Crowell. They are here to come forward. Erin's sculpture titled Silly Billy was named Best of Show, winning the overall top award in the competition. So congratulations.
Erin's been quite popular. I've seen her on the mobile app quite often and is an amazing, amazing artist. So if y'all haven't gone on our website, go look at the beautiful work that she won first place in. It was amazing. So congratulations. On behalf of our Chairman and Superintendent and all of our board, we want to present you with this certificate of recognition.
Very proud of you. Congratulations.
In addition to Best in Show, this show that was sponsored by the Gaston County Art Guild in conjunction with Gaston College and funded with a grant from the Gaston Arts Council, we had first, second, and third place. So I'd like to invite Mark Morales Reyes from Hunter Huss High School, who was first place, Brittany Garcia Barantes from Hunter Huss High School, who was second place, and Ashton Pope from North Gaston High School, who was third place.
Mark, you get to be the lone artist for second place. First, excuse me. Excuse me. So we're gonna celebrate all three, but I like Mark most since he was able to make it. Don't know why the other two aren't here, but they're amazing, amazing artists. All of our art students are phenomenal. I went to a show last night and it just amazes me the talent that we have in our district. I'm a little envious because I can't even draw stickers, but that's okay. We have wonderful talent here. But Mark, I'm sure our board wants to see your work and so very proud of you and can't wait to see what the future holds for you. So I'm gonna give you Brittany's. And is anybody here from North Gaston, or we'll just say that? We'll make sure... Well, maybe Mr. Crisp will make the trip over there and take it to Ashton. But again, on behalf of the board, we want you to have the certificate of recognition and are very, very honored and happy for you. You're a wonderful artist.
Members of your family would like to join you for the picture. I know Dr. Denton is here from Hunter Huss High School as well.
Oh, and your family, I'm sorry.
I'd like to thank all of our art teachers. This is a reflection of the work that began young in these students' careers and has culminated in these great awards. So thank you for all that you do every day for our students. Now, we're gonna shift to some state champions, and this is recognizing some of our individual state champions. And this is recognizing some of our individual state champions. We will start with students who won individual state championships at the indoor track and field state meet. So if I could have Cameron Massey of Ashbrook High School and Alexis Willis of Stuart W. Kramer High School to come forward, please. Hello, Cameron, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Great. So first place in the girls' shot put competition. How far did you throw it?
I think I threw it 38.5.
Congratulations. Cameron, I'm happy. We want to present you with this certificate of recognition. Congratulations to you. I pray that you'll continue on with your athletic endeavors and maybe you'll secure a scholarship to a fine university.
She is. Mr. Chair, may I say something to and about Ms. Massey? Ms. Massey, we are very proud of you. We know that you excel in sports, but academically, you are a smart young lady. And we love what you do and you represent the teens very well, so we want you to know that. Thank you. Just a minute, one person's missing.
You got that right. Maybe you gotta get in front. You're missing. I'll get him on the side.
Dr. Booker can also tell you that on Saturday, this young lady won the national championship in shot put in Kentucky.
Have you just come out and squeeze it? There you go. You're good. Perfect. Mr. Kinlaw, can I put you on this side? There you go. There you go. All right, everybody. Hold that hose down here. I'm not using this Android phone here. It zooms in, so. There you go.
So smart.
And Ms. Steiner, I see you here.
I am not a track.
You are not, but you can represent Ms. Willis because she won both the girls' triple jump and the girls' long jump in the state championship.
She is actually competing right now. She is coming back from some other position.
Please let her know how proud we are.
I will, I will. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to recognize three students who won state wrestling championships. With us tonight are Matt Courageous, Charlie Sly, and Bentley Sly from Stuart W. Kramer High School. If you all could come forward. Matt won the individual title in the 160 weight class. Charlie won the state championship in the 132-pound class, but he also was recognized as the Three As Most Outstanding Wrestler. And his older brother Bentley Sly, who, excuse me, his younger brother Bentley, who was a ninth grader, won the state championship in the 120-pound weight class. So congratulations to all three of you.
All right, we got three of you. If I can get them right. Charlie, congratulations. Bentley, awesome. And Mr. Courageous, so proud of you guys. You know, back when I was in high school, we played wrestling on turnbooks. We'd jump off the top rope. No one faked, basically. You guys are some good old guys and I'm so proud that you do that because my son, he's starting to get into that too and he really likes it. But thank you for representing our Gaston County Schools and wish you all the best. Those that are coming back, you gotta go back and defend that. You gotta work hard. You gotta put the work in so you can do it again next year. But speaking on behalf of Gaston County Schools, we are proud of you guys and wish you all the best. Thank you so much. You have any parents or family members here? Please come up.
I would be a parent.
Wow, that's very impressive. As we all know, we have a lot of great students and Gaston County excels in athletics and in the classroom. Next item on the agenda is opportunity for public expression. At this time, when the board will be hearing comments from citizens about the matter of public concern related to the school system, our board policy sets aside the first 30 minutes of our regular monthly meeting for the citizens to address the board. Before we hear from the public, I'd like to outline the rules of procedure. Citizens wishing to make comments and who have completed a request to speak before and prior to the beginning of the meeting will be recognized by the chair and then request to step to the microphone and make the comments. Citizen will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Members of the board do not respond to public expressions during the public comment period. Public expressions do not allow for comments on confidential or personnel matters. Speakers who wish to give materials to the board will hand them to our clerk. The chair should rule at all points of order during public expression. And we have one sign up tonight, and it's Bobby Paget. Bobby?
Bobby Paget, 7152 Marlin Street, Gastonia 28056. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Booker and others in attendance, like many before, I rise to speak tonight in reference to the debacle that is the Oracle payroll system we have suffered under for 15 months. I use the word debacle because it was specifically used in the lawsuit filed by NCAE Ms. Haywood and State Teacher of the Year, Mr. Kavnar. I was surprised when I learned of it last week because so many members of the organization had been seeking much swifter action. I have considered speaking before the board many times before now. For me, the final straw was receiving an incorrect W-2, how long it took to receive a W-2C, and having to spend the weekend filing amended tax returns. At the last meeting, Mr. Hoskins stated there were 30 incorrect W-2s in the district. At my worksite alone, there were about that many that had to be redone. I hope Mr. Hoskins supplies you with an updated figure later this evening or that you ask him directly for it. Over the past 15 months, I too have had excess deductions taken out, which were fortunately refunded, deductions not made for summer cash account and family health insurance escrow. My orbit account is only up to date through November 2022, and most egregiously, deposits to my 403B have not been made in a prompt manner. These late deposits that never happened prior to Oracle have cost me retirement income that I will most likely never recoup. Federal agencies refuse to act due to GCS being a public entity. While I know this board cannot comment on pending litigation and on concession, but will probably discuss it in closed session, I do believe that I have been harmed in manners stated in the suit. I do know there are many more employees in the district, NCA members and not, who would be willing additional plaintiffs if given the opportunity and hope that this will be certified by the presiding judge as a class action, given the number of employees impacted. Thank you for your time and attention. I return the balance of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Paget. The next item on the agenda is our approval and corrections amendment. I need a motion to approve the February 20th, 2023 regular meeting and February 24th, 2023. Mr. Dedman and second by Ms. Cherry, all in favor? Agenda is adopted. Next item on the agenda is a report from the Operation Committee. The Operation Committee's chairman is Brent Moore. The other members are Lee Dedman, Doc Cherry, and A.M. Stevens. Mr. Moore, who's going to give a report tonight? Ms. Cherry?
Operations Committee met on Monday, March 6th at 8:30 a.m. here in the boardroom. Chairman Ramsey indicated who is on that committee. Our agenda and discussions included the following. Gina Waters, Payroll Supervisor and Shawn Markwith, Oracle Technology Coordinator, presented an update that Oracle is beginning to level out with payroll issues throughout the district, even though there is still a learning curve. There are significantly less errors than there were a year ago, and most can be resolved through payroll department. W-2Cs are being corrected and sent out through inter-office mail and are available on ADP website. A ticketing system is being piloted in the TSS Department to process employee pay issues between all departments. Beam Construction presented the lowest bill to build New Greer Middle School. Beam Construction is a company that has also built Pleasant Ridge Elementary and Belmont Middle School. Excuse me. A request has been made to remove the gate and open access backup to Learning Way Drive so that cars can travel through it. If this request is granted, the requestor is offering to maintain the road and keep it in good working order. The Gaston County Commissioners have approved additional funding in the amount of $14.257 million to fund our upcoming capital projects. Gary Hoskins informed us that the superintendent's budget will be shared at the board meeting tonight. Gary? Erin Slusky shared that in order to be eligible for E-Rate program discounts, we must certify compliance with the Children's Internet Protection Act. One requirement is public notice and meetings. NCDPI has started to audit E-Rate programs, so this certifies that Gaston County Schools has met that requirement. The committee reviewed and is recommending approval for the following contracts on the consent agenda tonight. Educational Partnership International LLC, Participant Learning Reduction in Force, Northern Gaston High School Stadium Drainage Project, Ashbrook High School Drainage Work, Holbrook Middle School Roof Replacement, Cramerton Middle School Roof Replacement, Bessemer City Middle School Roof Replacement, Springfield Elementary Roof Replacement, various schools' HVAC cleaning, and there's a list online, high school sports field renovations, and that list is made available as well. Our next meeting is Monday, April 3rd at 8:30 a.m. at the School Nutrition Building. And Mr. Chair, that's our report.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. The next item on the agenda is a report from Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Ms. Doc Guthrie is our chair of that committee. The other members of that committee is Todd Kinlaw, Josh Chris, and Robbie Lovelace. Ms. Guthrie?
Mr. Chair, Mrs. Lovelace will present.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lovelace.
Thank you. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on March 6th, 2023. Members present were Doc Guthrie, Robbie Lovelace, Josh Chris, Todd Kinlaw, Doc Cherry, and Jeff Ramsey. The meeting was called to order at 12 o'clock p.m. Gary Hoskins, Chief Financial Officer and Finance Staff, shared information about Oracle and payroll concerns. Chad Duncan provided athletic updates pertaining to cheerleading. Cheerleading has the same off-season guidelines as other sports. Summer workouts are optional and open to all students. Cheer tryouts will continue to occur at the same time as other fall sports. Other teams are decided during the summer or during the upcoming fall. Cheerleading uniforms are provided by the schools for all team members. Mr. Duncan also shared the process for community use. Upon agreement, portions of Gaston County Schools' facilities may be used when the school district isn't utilizing the facilities. There is a fee schedule for all approved renters. Terry Serbeck gave the committee information about student assignment. The information included how students are enrolled and assigned to schools. Ms. Serbeck also explained the guidelines for student transfers and eligibility for the school choice lottery. The executive directors updated the committee on Camp Gaston. Camp Gaston is provided for students enrolled in Gaston County Schools at no cost to parents. The 2023 summer session will be held from June 12th through June 29th, 2023. There will be offerings for all levels, including academically and intellectually gifted, exceptional children, and multilingual learners. The meeting adjourned at 1:52 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Lovelace. Our committees will meet again on April 3rd. Thank you for those reports. The next item on the agenda is after-school program, ASPIRE. This is the information item, Dr. Reynolds and Dr. Conyers.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board members, Dr. Booker. It is indeed a pleasure for Dr. Conyers and I to be here this evening to share with you our wonderful after-school program, which we call ASPIRE. ASPIRE stands for After-School Program Inspiring Real-Life Excellence. That's what it stands for. This is an after-school program that's fully funded by the federal government. It runs in a cycle of three years. At this time, we have two cohorts that we have here in Gaston County. One is in its third year and one is in its second year. But we also partner with Gaston County Government, and they also have a program that we oversee. So we have actually four sites here in the district. What we pride ourselves in is, first of all, making sure that our students experience that personal growth and success when they're out of school. We also want to make sure that we provide the high-quality education, enrichment, and the opportunities of the entire child, just not the academics. And we also want to make sure, more than anything, that our students feel safe, that they feel that they are respected and that they are in a supportive environment. We also believe doing those things that our children, education is very important, that we appreciate and we like to make sure that our students receive the instructions that they need to receive, they receive the they need to receive, they receive the personalized instruction. We actually work along with our academic facilitators to ensure that the extended day is a part of their needed individual plans during the school day. So we not only have an enrichment program for them to involve in, but we also pride in our goals to make sure that our students receive their academic instructional extended-day resources. Also, again, like I said, students, we want to make sure that they are safe. We serve, these particular schools are high-poverty schools because they are Twenty-First Century Grant that's funded to us by DPI. They are Title I schools, and these schools fall under my area. And they are also, the opportunities that we provide them is not just after school, but also during the summers. So we have a very good structured program, and Dr. Conyers is going to let you know exactly what we do when the students are with us.
Good afternoon.
The Aspire program currently has four programs that we are serving in four sites. That's HHB, Lingerfelt, Pleasant Ridge, and Woodhill. And depending upon dismissal time, our program is from two-thirty to five-thirty or three o'clock to six. Within our programs, we have a site coordinator, tutors. We also have a custodian, TAs, and a counselor or a social worker. A general daily schedule, when students are dismissed from us, from their school, they come to the cafeteria or a location, it could be the media center, and students have supper in the cafe, then they go into transition to academic intervention. Most of the time, our teachers are teachers from the school, and they just transition to the after-school by extending their learning. Students have time to do homework, circle and connect. They have academic intervention and mental wellness, which is provided by our social worker or the counselor. And then we have academic enrichment, STEM and movement, and I'll give you an idea of what that is in just a moment. And then we have circle and connect, which is just a social time for our students to come together, talk about their day, talk about what they have done during the program as well. And then we prepare for dismissal and load buses by five-forty-five, five-fifty, depending on the location. So our enrichment activities, this is what draws our students into the Aspire program. We offer physical movement, character education, strategy games, Legos, soccer, dance, anything the students can think of, we try to provide that for them. We use a survey system with our students, and they tell us what they're interested in, and we try our best to find that enrichment activity for them so that they can have that broad way of enrichment that they may not get access to. We consider ourselves a dual-capacity framework program. So not only do we serve the students, but we serve the families as well. We offer quarterly parent engagement or caregiver engagement sessions. We partner with different organizations, which you'll see at the end, to offer those instructional guidance for our parents. We have monthly newsletters for our parents that we pass out to them. We have offered programming in financial literacy, GED classes, and most recently, we did exploring the end-of-grade test for our parents. We offer a summer program. Our summer program is usually held at HH Beam Elementary School from Monday through Thursday, eight to five, and we will start June twelfth. We offer six weeks of summer programming, and our daily activities include breakfast and lunch. Our students have a concentration time on academic support, highly focusing on literacy, and then we have enrichment movement. We try to offer field trips, and we have snack at the end of the day. So our program could not be successful without our site coordinators, our tutors, and the partners and vendors that we work with. These organizations and persons help to bring the program together and help us to have success. So what we would like to do is extend this wonderful opportunity to some of our other schools. So we're looking at Aspire Plus possibly coming in the future. The structure is there, the process is there, procedures are there. So it'll be similar to this program, maybe with a few tweaks. But I've spoken with parents, I've spoken with community members, and a lot of our other schools within Gaston County would really benefit from a resource such as this.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to have another comment question.
So our program is grant-funded, so we have to follow the grant details that we write originally. So we can have capacity of about two hundred students. That's twenty-five from Pleasant Ridge, twenty-five from Lingerfelt, seventy-five from HH Beam, and seventy-five from Woodhill. Those students enroll, we first use our students that we currently have in the after-school, so they get first position, and then we offer it up to those students who attend Pleasant Ridge and those other schools that we have.
Ms. Cherry?
What's your average daily enrollment per school during the school year?
Sure. So Pleasant Ridge average daily attendance is seventy-five, which is our grant number. Lingerfelt's average daily attendance is seventy-six. Woodhill is one of our larger programs. We're at one-twenty-five, and HH Beam, we are at one-twenty-seven.
Good.
So we have a total of about four hundred students currently.
What's your capacity at each school?
Our grant allows for one-fifty at Woodhill, one-fifty at HH Beam, seventy-five at Pleasant Ridge, and seventy-five at Lingerfelt.
Ms. Guthrie?
How do you determine that that child is really successful? Is there some way that you, at the end of the year, that you look back at his schoolwork and his grades and can expand on that?
Sure. So we don't only focus on their academics, but we do use diagnostic testing to provide that data for us. So our accountability department and our academic facilitators help us to monitor that data and disaggregate it to see growth in the students. But... Yes. So we offer quarterly teacher communication kind of cards, like index cards, which allows their daytime teacher to identify the skills that they are struggling with. And we do that for students who are scoring a C or below. Yes. And we also use our mental wellness, our social workers and our counselors to provide that kind of whole-child development as well.
Thank you. Ms. Guthrie?
I just want to commend you for, Dr. Conyers, for the work that I've seen you and your staff do now for more than two years. You are truly advocates for the children. You are really concerned about that day-to-day schedule and maintaining the routine.
Yes, ma'am.
And you believe in the literacy program. You address the social, emotional needs of the child. I've seen that in the counselors or your workers. They are just as strong about your program as you are. I've seen that. And we are very proud and honored to hear that after-schools put in forth as much effort to maintain whole-child learning as we are during the day. And we are honored to Zoom with your sites on a monthly basis. And they do everything that they said they do each day, they do that. And they're very careful about how they're scheduling their summer enrichment programs as well. So I commend you, Dr. Reynolds and Dr. Conyers, for a job well done in helping us to develop that child that's going to excel academically in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other thing I would like to say. There are protocols and procedures that DPI require us to report every single year. We have to show them that we are moving, that our kids are growing, so there's data and reports that we have to do, and we also get monitored on a regular basis. So there's things we have to do to be able to get these funds, to make sure that we're using them.
And you're also a Dream Center deputy. I'm just wondering how close you are to Aspire does in the Dream Center. And you're all familiar with the Dream Center.
Yeah, they're Twenty-First Century Grant as well. Yeah. But they're for middle school, I believe.
It is.
Ms. Cherry?
Dr. Conyers, do you ever, do you see this expanding to other schools? Can we? Or do we have the capabilities of expanding, and would we?
I would love for it to expand to other schools. We have the capabilities, and as Dr. Reynolds mentioned, we are hopefully moving in that direction where we can expand that.
Okay.
May I say one more thing? The nation, Woodhill. Woodhill has truly grown, and I know, you know, what I've seen happen thus far at Woodhill. And to have other schools say that they are interested in the Aspire Plus, that helps us to move our students forward academically. And they brought the whole program to our STEM Storytelling Festival at the museum last June. Those children were well-behaved and participated in the events, and they followed the instructors' guidance, whatever they were told to do. So we're looking at that development, and we appreciate what you do.
Thank you. You're welcome to visit us any afternoon.
Another question, Mr. Stevens.
First of all, thank you all for your passion for the kids and for what you do. Appreciate that. You're really enriching the folks of Gaston County, our community. Secondly, I'd like to ask, what time do you guys finish your day? And what would be the process for me being able to join you at the different sites?
You just need to come on out and visit us. Our program is from two-thirty to five-thirty at Lingerfelt, HH Beam, and Pleasant Ridge. And then it's from, excuse me, Woodhill. And then it's from three o'clock to six o'clock at Pleasant Ridge. The doors will be closed and locked, so you will need to phone call. There'll be a phone number outside. You'll need to use the phone to call our Aspire number to get in. You're welcome.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our high school exam schedules of spring twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and our traditional high school in Gaston Early College. This is an action item. Dr. Bostick.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Cherry, members of the board, and Superintendent Booker. As Mr. Ramsey said, I do bring you our spring final exam schedule. For our traditional high schools, our traditional high schools, the semester ends on May twenty-fourth, so backing up five days from that, we would begin exams on May eighteenth. And again, for both our traditional and our early colleges, we are required by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to give our students final exams during these last five days of the semester for our EOC areas, Career and Technical Education, and teacher-made exams. And so this is the schedule that you have for our traditional high schools of what that would look like, and of course, they do have early dismissal on those days. And then our two early colleges would follow this schedule because their semester ends on May the nineteenth, so backing up five days, they would begin exams on May the fifteenth. Any questions about exam schedules? Sure.
We do have exam exemption.
We do? Yes. We do still have that procedure in place. It went fairly well first semester. We anticipated going even better second semester as people kind of get acclimated and kind of understand the process. And so that has been successful, we think, for impacting attendance, which is what our goal was. Sure.
And this is a, yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Dedman, second, but Mr. Chris, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bostick. The next item on the agenda is our superintendent budget request, twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. This is an information item. Mr. Hoskins.
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, Superintendent Booker. I'm here to present the superintendent's budget request for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. We'll talk about the budget calendar, the budget overview, the local operating request, which is really the meat of this presentation, as well as the capital outlay, and then open it up for board discussion. Our budget calendar, we started this budget process back at your board retreat on January twenty-seventh, where we introduced the budget and some discussion points in the budget survey. In January and February, we gathered information from various department heads and supervisors. Then today, we're presenting the superintendent's budget request, and this will be the budget request to the county. On March twenty-eighth, there is a joint meeting with this board as well as with the county commissioners. Then on April seventeenth, we will present this as a final recommendation, and when it is accepted, or whatever is accepted by this board, will then become the Gaston County School Board of Education budget. We are required, we will submit this budget request to the county in April. The county will approve their own budget sometime in April or May. And then by June nineteenth, that'll be your last board meeting of the fiscal year. By state law, you're required to approve a balanced budget, so even if the state has not yet approved their budget, which has typically been the case, we will have an interim budget, and then we will wait until the state approves their budget, and then we will have a final budget resolution. So as we work through the budget, we want to make sure that this budget follows what the Board of Education has identified as your vision, your mission, and your priorities, and that is to have college and career-ready students, to have healthy, safe, and responsible schools, enhanced innovation and encourage innovation, and a qualified workforce. So the superintendent's budget request is for the county request. However, I want to just talk about the entire budget, just to give you a scope of the entirety of our budget. Our total revenues for this year are three-hundred-and-seventy-nine million dollars, and you can see that the state is the largest component of that, totaling fifty-five percent of our total budget, or just over two-hundred-and-seven million dollars. And so the state primarily allotts us money through the General Assembly. They approve the budget, then they have DPI allot money to the various LEAs or school districts. And they do that in three particular ways. They give us direct dollar allotments, they give us months of employment, and they provide us with positions. So those allotments that we get, dollar allotments for, the biggest one is probably teacher assistants. Those are funded using dollar allotments, clerical, custodial, transportation, school safety, supplies, et cetera. We also get months of employment. This is typically for our school administrators, our principals, assistant principals, and also CTE teachers have months of allotment, months of employment allotments. And then one of our biggest ones is positions, and these are our state teaching allotment positions. So regardless of whether a teacher has a salary of fifty-five thousand or thirty-seven thousand, they give us one position, and they pay for that teacher regardless of what their salary is. We also have positions for enhancement teachers, psychologists, and instructional support. So one of the driving factors of how much money we get from the state is what our student enrollment is, or what DPI calls ADM, Average Daily Membership. And you can see that prior to the pandemic, really starting in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, we started to have a decline in our enrollment. And of course, that was exacerbated by the pandemic that hit around twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. But since that time, you can see it's slowly starting to move back up. And this last year, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, is a DPI estimate or projection of what our ADM will be next year, and that's how they're going to fund us based upon that projection. Our state allotments are also dependent upon how many students we have that are EC students, the enrollment of the EC students. It drives our EC funding. It drives our at-risk funding or O-sixty-nine funding. It drives our DSSF funding or O-twenty-four funding. So again, you can see a pretty big drop during COVID, and then it's sort of flattened out for the last couple of years. In addition, obviously, to the state funding, we have federal funding as one of our large components of how we operate the school district. Title I next year, we expect to increase from twenty-nine schools that we have this year to thirty schools next year. Also, our idea, which is our EC funding, our CT funding, and then one thing that we've talked about for the last couple of years is our ESER funding or our, really, our COVID-19 funding. ESER I funds have been fully used and exhausted. We still have one-point-four million dollars in ESER II money that will expire September of this year and is fully budgeted and expected to be used completely. ESER III funding, just under forty-seven million dollars, will expire September of next year, and that money is also budgeted and expected to be fully used. So our ESER funding, some of the things that we've been doing with that, you know, we've been using this for two and a half years now. One of the things most recently is our COVID retention bonuses. So with four thousand employees, when we pay a thousand-dollar bonus, that's a four-million-dollar use of our COVID money. So this has been one of our bigger funding portions for COVID because we've already paid two... because we've already paid two COVID bonuses, and we're on schedule to pay two more in June of this year. Also Chromebooks, you know, before COVID, we were not one-to-one. Now we are. We've got nurses in all of our schools, some additional teaching allotments, the air purifiers that you see in all the classrooms. All those are things that we've been using the COVID funds over the past two-plus years. And with every dollar revenue that we have, we're required by law to have the corresponding dollar of expenses. And you can see our expenses, two-thirds of our expenses are in instructional services. And so we've been using these expenses for the current year with Phase I of our letters training for teachers, EOG prep camps, our TA-to-teacher programs, so a number of programs that are going on, on the instructional side, that we've been using these funds for. And then on the local side, and this is what we'll dig into a little bit deeper, we use these for salary supplements, for our teachers, for our principals. Instructional supplies, SROs, athletics and art programs are fully funded by local dollars. And we also have charter school allotments. About 10% of our students in Gaston County are enrolled in charter schools. And so we have to give 10% of our funding, which is about $5 million, $150 million of funding, to those charter schools. So as we dig into the local operating requests, and this is really what we'll be talking about at the meeting on March 28th, is what are we asking the county for? And so first of all, let's look at what they've already provided us. And this gives us a history of where we've been over the last three years. So you can see in year 1920, we were at $50,311,000. The county actually cut our funding by half a million dollars that year. So we dropped down to $49,811,000. The following year, 2020, 2021, you know, this is really when we're coming out of, not really coming out of COVID, but we're getting a better sense of COVID. We're starting to get some of the ESER funding from the local side and the federal side. They fully funded our request, and that was an extra almost $1.7 million. It took us to $51.5 million. This past year, this current year, actually, they provided us with an extra $1 million. So our current local funding stands at $52.5 million. So what we'll talk about going forward is what additional funding request does this board have? And so as we talked about at the board retreat back in December, you know, we set out budget surveys to our stakeholders to ask them, what items should we be funding with our local funds? And these are the 22 options that we presented. And we've been running this for about eight or nine years. So we do have some data on this. And we use that data, you know, to sort of get a historical perspective of are we, you know, meeting what the needs of what the shareholders say? And each year that we've done this, increasing teacher supplement has clearly been the number-one funding choice by our stakeholders. And they're given five options, and this is the number-one option with 78% of our stakeholders. The other four options, increasing classified salaries, increasing student support, more TAs, and upgrading school safety systems. So when we look at those five, their top five items, we also want to look at what is the primary funding source? Because we're asking the county for funds. So we want to understand how these items are funded. So the first two items, the top two priorities, increasing teacher supplement and increasing classified salaries, those are impacted by what the county gives to us, you know, certainly the teacher supplements. Increasing student support, we really think about the nurses. We've been funding nurses in all of our schools using these COVID funds. Now, these COVID funds will run out after this next year. And so we've already been communicating with the county over the past couple of years, you know, that we will be coming back to them and asking them for funding to continue this very important program. Also, asking for new teacher assistants. Again, those are, those teacher assistants come from state funds. And so that's what really dictates how many teacher assistants we have. And then upgrading our school safety programs, that comes out of a mixture of bond funds and capital outlay. So there are two types of increases in funding. And one is ongoing expenditures, and the other is new initiatives. And so ongoing expenditures will be, what's the additional money that we need just to stay where we are now? Inflation is a good example of what one of those items will be. And the other is new initiatives. These are add-ons to what we've been doing this past year. So with the ongoing expenditures, we have three identified here, and I'll go through each one of these. The first one is the state increase in employer-paid benefits. So the state dictates how much our health insurance premiums are and how much our employer-provided retirement contribution is. Every employee pays 6%, but we, as the employer, right now, pay 24.5% of their salary into their retirement. So that is dictated by the state. Well, they will cover that for all the state-paid employees, but we have a number of local-paid employees. So we have to cover that increase. And so right now, we do not have any guidance from the state on this. So we used what we've done last year, or what the state did last year. And the state increased the health insurance premium last year by roughly 5%, and the retirement contribution roughly 7%. And so you can see over the last 10 years, these contribution rates have steadily moved up. And we expect that to continue next year. Also, we will, we will be asking for replacing our end-of-life Chromebooks. As we state right here, this is currently covered by COVID-related funding, and it will be covered by COVID-related funding next year, which is the year that we're asking for in our budget. After that, it will not be. So we've got a three-year budget ask that we give to the county. And so we're not asking for these funds next year, but we will for the two years following that. Next year, we expect the purchase of 7,200 devices. That's for all incoming second, sixth, and ninth graders to cost about $2.1 million. As I mentioned earlier, inflation, we're budgeting 4.1%. That's based on, you know, some things I've been reading. We have about, or we spend about $16 million on goods and services. And so if you take the 4.1% out of that 16, off of that 16 million, that's about $655,000 for goods and services. In addition, Duke Energy has requested a 6.2% increase in their utility rate. And our utility rates are currently about $5 million. So if that rate is approved, then that would impact us by about $310,000. So all inflationary expenses, we're budgeting and asking the county for, $965,000. We also have new initiatives, and we have about seven new initiatives here, some that we will be asking for funding from the county. Some are currently funded by COVID right now. We will be asking the county for funding after next year. So the first item, and again, the item that is on here every year, that is increasing our teacher, our local salary supplements for teachers. The county and this board has approved, increased our supplements by $4.68 million. And so we're recommending another $500,000 increase. In addition, the state does pay a teacher supplement now. They used not to do that prior to last year. So we did just want to note this, but this is not a part of our local request. And so here you can see how much we have, the district has paid over the past eight or nine years, up to $4.68 million. However, we continue to be in the bottom half of when we look at other local school districts. Look at Cabarrus County and Union County, which are not just local, but they're also about our same size. We're well below where we are. We've made a lot of progress, but so have the other school districts, and just as faster, even faster than we have. Also, we're asking for an increase in classified employee compensation. That will be our hourly employees. Again, the state has not given any guidance, but we're using last year's number. Last year, they did the greater 4% or $15 an hour. We are budgeting this year 4%. And again, the state will cover state-paid hourly employees, but not locally-paid hourly employees. And so our portion of this, if the state does a 4% increase, will be $335,000. Certified employee increases are the same. This was based on the historical increase last year, 4%. That would cost us about $180,000. Also, nursing positions in schools, this is a COVID-funded ask right now, or last year or the year before, we added 30 additional nursing positions so that every single school would have a nurse. A number of these positions may be contracted out. So we're estimating this, this would be $2.8 million for next year. Again, it will be covered by COVID in that '23, '24. Also covered by COVID, we've added 14 custodial positions to try to decrease the number of square feet that our custodians are having to clean, and also to add some central office support so that when a custodian is sick or there's a vacancy, the county can send somebody over there to help support that school. Cost of this would be about $618,000. Again, it's not included in our request for next year. Also, school grounds maintenance. Prior to 2020, our custodians were responsible for cutting the grass, maintaining the grounds, and maintaining the cleanliness of the schools. After 2020, we hired lawn care professionals to take care of our grounds. And that way, our custodial staff was able to focus all of their efforts to keeping the inside of the school clean. Those are two different skill sets, and I think it's resulted in our schools looking really good. The projected cost of this for this year is $1.8 million. Again, we're using COVID-related funding, so that will be not a request of the county for next year. And finally, replacing some school ground equipment. We've identified about eight schools that have some older playground equipment that needs to be replaced. We have a schedule, a projected schedule, if it's funded by the county, to replace five of these next year and three the following year. So our total, as I mentioned, we're currently funded $52,501,704. We're asking for ongoing expenditures of $1,585. New initiatives, $1,300. And so our total request of the county, or the superintendent's request, is $55,386,704. That's about 1.2 million higher than what the request was last year. In addition to operating funds, we also are providing capital funds, what we call capital outlay, from the county. And so there's two primary functions or sources of funds for capital. Number one is school bonds. That's part of the $250 million that was approved by the shareholders back in, or the voters, rather, back in 2018. That's for new construction, classroom additions, capital replacements, and then capital outlay, which is what our request is here, preventative maintenance, minor repairs, and contracted facility services. So as I mentioned, it's mainly used for maintenance. And here's a number of things that we use, HVAC, vehicles, plumbing, et cetera, our capital outlay funds for. Our maintenance costs are largely dictated by the age of our buildings. I think 60% to 70% of our buildings, even though we've been building a lot of new schools, it seems like over the last seven, eight years, is still over 40 years old. The quality and experience of our custodial staff, you know, having our custodians 100% focused on our facilities has helped quite a bit. The training of our staff and any deferred maintenance backlog. So each year, we use this source to just see where we are with our funding. This is Managing for Results in America's Great City Schools. This was published in 2022, and it is for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. And they survey a number of school districts throughout the country to find out what their annual maintenance costs per square foot are. And you can see Gaston County Schools is in that bottom section. As of 2020, 2021, our funding was at 24 cents per square foot. And the median for that same period was $1.27 per square foot. Now, we'll say that the year after this, the 2021, 2022 school year, they gave us an extra $1 million, which is very helpful. So right now, we have about 5.1 million square feet of school and administrative space. And most of our administrative space is old schools. This year, as I mentioned, we did receive $2.2 million from the county, which is about 44 cents per square foot. And again, you look back, and 44 cents is still well below even the lower quartile of 95 cents. So we are requesting $6.5 million from the county. The superintendent's recommending that we request $6.5 million. This amounts to $1.27 per square foot. And again, that would put us right there where the median is for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year, based on the data presented by this particular source. So our request, as I mentioned, proposed request is $6.5 million. Most of that would be under general renovations. We would also provide some funding for various technology. We've done a good job of keeping our vehicle fleet fairly new and current and running well, and so we would continue that process. And also furniture, we've tried to, you know, replace furniture in our schools as, you know, as quickly as we can when we have the funding. So that's what we would propose to use those funds for. So we do believe that this request supports Gaston County Schools' vision and mission, and we would open this up for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I do.
All right, Ms. Keth.
Mr. Hoskins, I wanted to ask you, and you may not be able to give me the answers, but ESER funding, learning cottages. If we know that a school would like to have a few of those, how is it determined that they get them?
So our ESER budget is, was approved at the time that we received the funding. So we would have to rebudget or reallocate, you know, from wherever those funds are budgeted right now, and reprioritize that into the item that you just mentioned, the learning cottages. So it would have to be moved from one area that maybe we've, three years ago, we thought we were going to focus on, and now we've changed our focus. We would have to do a budget amendment. And that would have to go to DPI and be approved by DPI, as well as this board.
Okay, but, but thank you. The next one, I don't think would need to go that far. I've been a librarian all of my life, and it's something that I dearly love. And when I am in the library, I don't like to be interfered because the children belong to me then. I don't like the way Woodhill is structured. And I have done the research, and I know that we can get a wall there, or we can move that wall and give that librarian this, the privacy that she needs with her students. Or we could do something there. Because I found in my research that you could pull, do like a little wall and move in that outer part of the shelving closer to the main area. Something must be done there. I don't like the way classes walk through and interfere with what she's doing in her media center. We know that there's growth happening in, at Woodhill School, and whatever preventative measures we can take, they ought to be made. And I also know that other media centers have received those special things that they need in order to meet the needs of the librarian and the students. So what can be done? So what can be done with Woodhill School based on funding that you have now?
Well, we have been focusing on media centers, as you're aware of. So if Woodhill needs some additional attention, we have people on staff, as you know, Pepe, to help work with us and identify the best way to do that. We also have to work with a fire marshal, because I believe a couple of years ago, we were blocking off a hallway, and we had to change that. So we'd just have to work through a couple of things to make sure that it's safe and that it accomplishes the priority of getting some privacy to those breakout classes or classrooms that meet in the media center.
We have to help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert. Anyone else? Okay.
I really would like to have a sense of our computer before I can.
I didn't see it.
First of all, I can't see really that good anyway. And some of this stuff we've already done over. But it would be nice before we go over these things that I have it. I would request that you do that.
We should have a comment there. Well, we'll just move on to the next item, Gary Hoskins. This is School Business Systems Modernization Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Provide an update on the School Business Systems Modernization Project. We mentioned last meeting, essentially progressing on the same three items, retirement contributions, multiple deductions, comp time, pay rate. We'll go through each of those individually. Starting with retirement contributions, our North Carolina state retirement files have been posted through November. You know, we're working on the next three months. We have December, January, February. We will be submitting those as soon as we can. We've got two payrolls to run this week. And as soon as those payrolls are run, we'll be focusing on that. The second two bullets, the 401K within power is posted through February, which means it's current, because obviously March is not yet complete. And also, the other retirement plans, the 457, 43B, are also posted through January or through February in our current. Multiple deductions continues to be one of the most challenging to address because a lot of these, even though it's a global, it was caused by a global issue, we have to resolve it on an individual basis on a lot of these. And so we have to look at every single payroll or every single individual in each of their pay slips. And so that is challenging. We're continuing to try to make progress on that. And then our comp time pay rate, I think I mentioned last time. If you were, if you earned comp time last year, and you were earning $13 an hour when you earned that comp time, now you're making $15 an hour, and you want to take that comp time, the system is paying you at the $13 an hour. And we were working with Cherry Road and Oracle to get that corrected to the current pay rate and to make up the difference between the old pay rate and the current pay rate so that those individuals are reimbursed for that. As I mentioned, we, you know, continue to have individual issues. A lot of these are older issues. Some of the newer pay runs that we've made are having fewer and fewer issues, but we're still catching up on some of these older issues. And those are incorrect deductions, overpayments. I already mentioned comp time and retirement, and then some leave balance accruals. And so I think, as mentioned earlier, because these individual items, right now, you've got some coming through in a Google Sheet, some coming through in multiple emails, some coming through in telephone calls. We're trying to work to get a more efficient system, TSS. We've been working with them. You know, we do all of our TSS ordering through ticketing system. We do our ticketing system with our facilities department. It's a efficient, more efficient way to handle issues. And so we're working with them to do that. They will help us gather all of our older information or older issues and get them all consolidated into one place, and then help train our people on the ticketing system, specifically our financial secretaries. And then, any new issues, we'd, you know, we'd send out a link, you know, for people to put those new issues. And it looks very much like the Google Sheet that they have now. I think when TSS helped to create that, we tried to keep that same look and feel so that it's not totally new. And we're hoping to be able to, after we test this and run it through maybe a couple of departments, have it out by the end of next month. We've mentioned our outstanding issues through, I think, last Friday. We still have 463 folders remaining. That's still too high, obviously. So we're, as I mentioned, we've got two payruns to run this week. So we will continue to work through these folders as quickly as we can. I think the last number we had back in February, into February, was close to 500, just under 500, three weeks ago or so. Our Form W-2 distribution, we have distributed 5,220 W-2s. All of those were mailed on January 28th. I did talk last month, last board meeting, about errors and issues. And I think at the time, it was mentioned, we only had 30 that had been identified. After the board meeting, we sent out a communication to all employees. Employees started checking that, and obviously, that number has ballooned. So about 15% of our W-2s, recipients of W-2s will also get a Form W-2C. And as of Friday, 96% of those people have been, received their W-2C or it's been put online. So as soon as the W-2C is corrected, it is available on the ADP website. However, we print it, and then we send it to their school. And schools get inter-office mail maybe every other day. So depending on when it goes out, it could be, you know, three or four days. But it is available immediately on ADP. And the two main reasons, issues that we had to address, number one was the Box 13, retirement plan was not checked for all qualified employees. And Box 16, state earnings did not include all deductions from state earnings. And that's primarily one of the insurance companies, I can't remember the name. Colonial, yes, I'm sorry. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Gary. I've got a couple. Where are we as far as the ticketing process?
So we're saying the end of April, but, you know, it could be earlier. It's, we've been, we've been using TSS as a guinea pig. They've been putting in tickets, and we've already had training for payroll. We have training for our HR staff on Thursday, so we've got to get them trained first. Like I said, we've been, you know, just doing a slow rollout to people, you know, just to try to see how it works and see, you know, get a good feel for it, make sure that we fully understand it before it's rolled out to everybody.
Well, I was just going to, just for discussion's sake, the last payroll that we have had, was that a pretty clean payroll? The one that was two weeks ago?
The one that was two weeks ago, actually, they finished the payroll on Tuesday before 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And it has been taking until 9 o'clock, 8, 9, 10 o'clock in the evening. So knock on wood, the last one went really well. They're currently, we'll be running one tomorrow, so we'll see. When I talked to them before I left, they seemed happy with how things, preliminary reports and errors and issues have gone. As I think Gina mentioned, you know, to the committees, now the errors that we're seeing, they can fix. Whereas in the past, the errors that they were seeing, they couldn't fix. So then they would have to go to Cherry Road or Oracle, and that would take some time. And that, you know, ended up, you know, delaying when they got processed. And sometimes they had to run it, you know, and just leave those to the side so that everybody else, you know, was run on time, and then do an off-cycle and pay for those. So we're not going through that right now, but I don't want to, you know, still not, you know, the stability of the system is still a concern of mine. So when we have a good payrun, I'm still not quite confident that that's going to happen every single time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Lovelace?
Mr. Hoskins, what is being done for our employees about their lost interest due to the late posting of the 401K and the 403B?
So 403Bs and 401Ks, those are market-based investments. If the market went up from the time those funds should have gone in till the time the funds did go in, the Empower will tell us how much money that we have to contribute. Unfortunately, the market has been drifting down over the last several months, and we have not received any information from them on monies that we had to make up for those, for that delay.
But this interest will be made up for our employees, is that correct?
It would be the market difference.
Market difference.
The vendor would have to tell us, because obviously, we don't, we don't know that.
Okay.
But Empower or whoever, Horace Mann or somebody, would have to tell us that amount, yes.
And also, have you been successful in hiring any additional people, personnel for the finance department since we last met?
We did interview somebody, make an offer. They've not yet accepted on a finance position, not the payroll position. We have engaged a former finance officer who is retired to assist us with some duties in the finance department to help get things caught up. And also, payroll is working with Pierce Group on getting some payments for some of the benefits. I think it's Colonial, they'll help us get those Colonial payments paid, which will help keep that up to date.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chris?
Speaking of the Colonial benefits and some of those supplemental benefits where people may have been dropped, what is our recourse for making sure they're back vested and whole in those programs?
We have contacted Pierce Group a couple of times. Colonial should be paid current now, but that was not always the case. And people did get letters notifying them that they would be dropped. We contacted Pierce Group. Pierce Group is sort of our broker, and then Colonial is under Pierce Group. They went and reached out to Colonial to make sure that they did not drop people. So if someone was dropped, please let us know, and we will do whatever we need to do to make that whole.
Thank you. Mr. Kenla?
Mr. Hoskins, I thank you for your hard work. But, you know, in my professional career, this has been going on for 15 months. And this is nothing personal. I just want to make sure I understand what's going on. And when I signed up for this, the people elected me for transparency, accountability. And, you know, my question is, in my real-life job, if I was bringing something to the market every month that was failing or was not working, we'd have to make some changes, or they would make changes with my product. I'd no longer be in business. My question is, is this is such a great program, such a great system, why do we continue to have failures? And how do we fix it? Who do we hold accountable to fix these 400, I think it's 463 now? Last month, it was like 498. I mean, we've changed 30-something. I mean, as of today, I've gotten seven emails about their payroll not being correct. What, I can't fix it. I work for them, I work with you guys. But if it was so good, why can't we hold someone accountable to get this fixed? And get it fixed quickly so we can take care of our employees?
Well, taking care of our employees, you know, obviously is paramount. And, you know, we feel, we feel the same amount of pain and frustration that many of our employees have as well. Because prior to this, you know, if an employee had an issue prior to the conversion, it was fixed timely. Now it's not. What we have done is essentially, knock on wood, not created additional problems. These 400 and something problems were primarily 2022, August, March, June, that we're still trying to work through. Very few, January 23, February 23, issues that we weren't able to resolve really, even before the employee was able to identify that. The problem is, the staff that we have is built to run a normal payrun and correct normal payrun issues. The staff that we have is not built to fix 500 issues from the last year. We're trying to work through those as quickly as we can. We run a payrun every other week, and so that gives us about every other week that we're able to work on those issues. Unfortunately, you know, we had a number of W-2Cs that came up this past month. That took a lot of time. They knocked out 96% of those. But, you know, you need to go through a whole system for a whole year in order to figure some of these things out. In August, we had teachers coming back, and that caused some issues. January, we've identified these issues with W-2s. So I know that doesn't answer your question. We've been trying to add staff, but there's just not a lot of qualified applicants out there for payroll.
So if I understand you correctly, this is not an Gaston County input problem. This is a computer system problem, correct? For the most part?
Can you expand on that just a little bit?
Meaning, it's not that somebody's inputting information is incorrectly or we're transferring data incorrectly. It's more of a system. It's a square peg in a round hole, is what I'm asking.
It was primarily related to the conversion.
Okay. Do we have any recourse with those folks? I mean, because our folks are, we continually get those emails. And I signed up for this, just like the rest of us did, and I take accountability for that. But, I mean, I think we got to be able to give people some good, hard evidence on when this is going to be corrected. And it's tough, it really is.
I understand. Well, the recourse, Cherry Road has been still working with us. They've been on-site back last year. They have dedicated resources to us. Oracle has dedicated a resource to us to try to get, number one, like I said, get things fixed so that going forward, we're not having the same issues. They're not able to look at Gary Hoskins and figure out, you know, did I get double-deducted in February? Our staff has to do that. What they can do is they can help to make sure that going forward, Gary Hoskins is not double-deducted, so that it's not a continuing problem. The problem is, our staff is really the ones that is tasked with fixing those 463 items. That's not something that we can just say, here, Cherry Road, or here, Oracle, fix these people. They don't understand all the intricacies of a school system from North Carolina's payroll. Our people do. And unfortunately, we got five people. And that's, you know, that's sort of where we're challenged with that.
You also mentioned too about the ticketing system?
Yes, sir.
Training our folks, is that going to take an extended amount of training for those folks to work that system? Because I'm getting emails that people aren't getting correspondence, teachers and employees aren't getting correspondence for the emails that they sent. Now, I don't know how true that is. I'm going on what I would hope they wouldn't share incorrect information with me.
No.
But are our folks, is there a check and balances to make sure that when a situation is, or an email is sent, or something arises, is there a check and balances to make sure that person is contacted? Now we're going to a new ticketing system. Is that going to better it, or is it going to make it stay the same?
It should make it better, because that's one of our challenges, is that, you know, we'll get five, six emails, and to your point, you've got seven. I guarantee you Gina's gotten 75 today.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure she has.
She can't reply to all of them. She can't reply to all of those. With the ticketing system, once you put in your ticket, you'll be able to see who's working on it. When somebody opens it up and works on it, you'll get an email, so that you'll know that somebody's working on it. And that's another one of our problems. We may get a, an email or something and find that something's wrong, we fix it, we don't send an email telling them it was fixed. You know, it's one of those things, let me fix this thing, let me fix this thing, and then they don't know it's fixed. And if you get an extra $100 on your check, that doesn't raise a red flag, but that $100 may have fixed the $100 six months ago that you were short that you still remember. So we've got to tell our people when we fix things. And so that's part of what this ticketing system will do, is that when a ticket is closed, they will be notified that that's happened. So the communication is one of, you know, our biggest challenges and shortcomings of this process, and we believe that the ticketing system will significantly help us. It, it won't be perfect, because you could put in a ticket, and we may not be able, you run, we're running payroll this week, it may not get opened up till, you know, next week. So that's still not going to, you know, fix that, but at least when it is opened, you'll see something. And when it is closed, you'll be notified.
In your best, as my old history teacher would say, swag, do you have, Ms. Medlock, rest her soul, South Point High School, do you have an idea, some semblance of when this may be corrected? And I don't, I'm not going to pin you to a date, but I mean, we went 30 in a month. Are we, is it going to be 30 a month? Are we hoping to knock out 130 a month to get these 463 taken care of?
Yeah, it was 30 this past month, because we focused our resources on the W2Cs.
Okay.
Let's be honest, because there was a lot of them. And, you know, there, there was a lot to do, and we knocked out 96% of them, we still got a 4%, you know? If you're one of the 4%, you're still not happy. So we still have to address those, but it's much more manageable. But it was very unmanageable for about a week. You know, we got in a lot of, a lot of calls and emails, and rightfully so, that we had to address. So next month should be different. But I don't know, you know, I would, we did, last week, we did move two months in our orbit. We had October accepted, we had November accepted. I would love to have Orbit up to date, you know, very soon, because that's, you know, that's using up some of our payroll supervisor's time, and she's the main one. So if we can get that caught up to date, and she's able to get on track, that'll be helpful. But the 463, you know, Ms. Kenlaugh, I'm really, we've got to get people pulled off and go through those, because I believe a, a number of them have been fixed. You know, not a, I, I don't know how many, but like I said, we get an email, we fixed something, well, maybe there was a folder for it, and it just, the folder didn't get closed out. So we're working to get that cleaned up. I can't give you a swag on that, that number, just because it's such a difficult task, because one item could take two hours, or it could take 10 minutes, and may have already been fixed. So, sorry, but that's...
Karen, I know this is a moot, moot question, but going back to line, item 13 or line, is, was that a, was that a Oracle error, or was that an, an inputting error from employees that they, that they missed a box?
No, so that was a conversion issue.
Okay, okay.
So when, when, when it was set up, Colonial was set up as to be federally tax-deferred, and it should have also been state tax-deferred, and it was not.
Mr. Chris?
Sorry?
So, Ms. Hoskins, just to make sure we, we all understand, DPI gave us two systems to choose from. Gaston County did not go out and seek this system to use, correct?
Correct.
And we chose Oracle, and we understand the issues that has, has given us. Who, who else in the state chose the other option? And what, and what issues are they having, if you know that, from your colleagues across the state?
New Hanover went with Tyler. They've had a number of issues, different issues. I think they're actually caught up on Orbit, whereas we are not. I don't want to say, I, I don't know, I don't spend a lot of time with them, and I don't want to say anything on TV that, that may not be correct about the issues that they're facing. But I know in attending meetings at DPI, you know, I'm on the executive council, and the lady from New Hanover is also on their executive council, and she provides an update with where they are on their system, and I provide an update where we are on, on our system, and they're very similar. Let me just say that.
Ms. Lovelace?
Mr. Hoskins, speaking of the W2s and the W2Cs, will our employees be reimbursed if they have incurred additional charges from their tax preparer as a result of having a corrected W2 sent to them?
So you should be able to send your W2C in with your next year's tax returns, I, I believe. Now, you may want to double-check with your tax preparer, but I, I believe that could be the case, I'm not sure. So, you know, I'll need to have a little bit more information. You know, again, as we said in the, in the committee meetings, we don't want to reimburse somebody $100 when their taxes are only going to be affected $25. We're talking about the state taxes are higher than they should be. The state tax rate of 5% is, is $5 on $100. So if it's $100 more than it should be, then they're going to, you know, be able to lower their state tax rate by $5. I don't want to pledge to spend $100 for them to, to be able to refile those taxes. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next item is our consent agenda. We have a long list on there, and I will need a motion for approval. Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Second, Ms. Guthrie, all in favor? That's unanimous. That brings us to the time of our meeting to hear the comments from our superintendent, Dr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have a lot of things that are beginning to happen, and it's the time of the year we start seeing our productions of our dramas and things. So just want to update you, our academically and intellectually gifted department is hosting Math Masters, Math &amp; Lead, and the Elementary Battle of the Book Competition this week. On Thursday, March 23, at 6:00 PM, the department will hold Coffee House 678 program, and this is an event that, where students recite poems and stories by some of the world's most prominent writers. And so again, this just celebrates the work that is going on in our ELA. Two of our high schools have spring musicals this week. Stuart W. Kramer presents Seussical on March 23, 24, and 25, as well as a matinee on March 26. In addition, North Gaston High School presents the musical Into the Woods on the 23, 24, and 25. And on Saturday, April 1, Hawksnest Steam Academy will produce its play Disney's Mona Jr., with shows at 1:00 PM and 3:30 PM. Also, on April 1, Forestview High School is hosting a prom closet from 9 until 2:00 PM, and this is an opportunity for students who are in need of a dress for the prom to get one free of charge. So again, that is April 1, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Forestview High School. This year, Holbrook Middle School will be hosting our All County Middle School Band Concert on Saturday, April 1 at 2:00 PM, and our All County Chorus Concert for middle schools and high schools is Tuesday, April 4 at 6:00 PM. Also, Webb Street is having its annual plant sale from April 3 through the 6. The students have been really working in the greenhouse, and this is a big sale and a big fundraiser for them, if you can support them, April 3 through the 6 at Webb Street. And as a reminder, spring break is around the corner. Friday, April 7 is a state holiday for all employees. Our schools will be closed, as well as central office, and April 10 through 13, through the 14th are days which there'll be no school for students that entire week. And we will have a job fair on Friday, April 28. The event runs from 9:00 AM until 12:00 PM. Applicants of all types of seeking employment at Gaston County Schools are welcome to attend that. You can fill out a form online under the jobs tab on our human resources page. There are many other activities going on, but that's a quick rundown of some for you. The job fair will be at Catawba Heights Baptist Church in Belmont. And so, Mr. Chair, I encourage folks to get out and see a play, a concert, all this is great things that our students are doing. We do need a closed session for several items, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Booker. As we close our meeting, thank you for all your time and attention tonight, working for the best of our students, teachers, and our community. We look forward to our next meeting, which is currently scheduled for April 17, 2023, and we do have two birthdays. A.M. Stevens turned 40 March 3, and Robbie Lovelace turned 60 on March 24. You're not near Social Security yet. So we wish each and every one a very happy birthday. That said, I need a motion to go into closed session. Ms. Cherry?
Mr. Chair, under North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11A, 3 and A6, consultation with attorney and personnel.
Second, by Mr. Moore, all in favor? We're in closed session. We're in closed session.
...
We're back in open session. I'd like to call Mr. Dedman.
Need a second? All right.
Mr. Stephen, all in favor? It's you now. Good evening.
Good night.